Welcome to the May 4, 2021 Board of Education meeting. Ask you to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Okay, uh, record should reflect that at 7:00 PM, the Board of Education met in executive session to discuss a school planning matter, a contract matter involving individual employees of Board of Education, and we have not covered two of the executive items, Board of Education matters, both the self-evaluation and Board officers, which will be, picked up at another time. Okay. Any comments, Dr. Kaltenekker from the public on matters not on the agenda?
No, there are no comments from the public, Ira.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion, please, to adopt tonight's agenda?
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
All in favor, please? Aye. May I have a motion, please, to adopt tonight's consent agenda for personnel, special services, and business?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, please? Aye. Which brings us to one of the truly special events of the Board of Education calendar each year, which is the recognition of the 20,000, 2021 Authentic Science Research Seniors and Regeneron Science Talent Search Scholars. Uh, we at Byram Hills are very fortunate every year to do very well in this competition. Some people have taken it as Byron Hill's birthright, that we're to do spectacularly well every year, and I think we do. And, you know, people ask me from time to time, what does the Board really do? And I tell people, well, many years ago, by a vote of four to three, the Board created the science research program. So by one vote, a lot of people, a lot of students' lives were changed, and I'd like to think for the better. Uh, so let me pass this over, please, to the superintendent.
All right, thank you, Ira. Tonight, I'm not sure how many parents and students we have who are watching this live stream, but hopefully you can watch it later if you didn't have a chance to watch it now. I don't see any kids on our sports field, although some may be practicing for the play at the high school. Um, this, this has always been one of the most cherished events, to have students come up to the district office and to have the Board see these students and, and the fruition of their work and to explain their work. I especially love the titles, which half the time, even though I have a doctorate, I don't understand. And Gina Cunningham and Tim Kaltenekker are going to do their best tonight to say the titles of the works that the kids did. But that is one of our favorite times. And something that I pretty much say every year, but I say it because I mean it. What I find the most compelling about this program and about the dedication of these students to fulfilling this program is their dedication to something that they are passionate about and interested in. And I know that some of our students have gone on in the fields that they studied when they were here in science research, and those who have not gone on in those fields have gone on with a full knowledge of what it takes to dive into something at a complex level that most people don't ever have the opportunity to do. So I want to commend those students and commend their families who have supported them through this as they were trying to find mentors in the midst of a pandemic, as one student was germinating seeds in his closet, you know, instead of going with a mentor, I mean, they had a lot of adjustments that they had to make during this. And I know that our children in this program really were thriving this year, that they overcame obstacles, they found new ways to do it, they found new partnerships with their friends in the program who they can call colleagues, who helped them to problem solve how they were going to manage this. And this kind of lifelong commitment to a work that you're doing is unparalleled for a student your age. You've emerged into an adulthood and an acceptance of your passion, and you've demonstrated that passion greater than many adults are even capable of. So congratulations to you. My only sadness is that you weren't here to celebrate with us tonight in person so that the Board could see you and I could see you and give you a hearty congratulations for everything that you've done. It is absolutely amazing. I don't think I understood the magnitude of science research until I went through my doctoral program. And I think that your partners to me and that work in everything that you had to do to get this done. And I encourage you to approach everything this way. Take, take a road, go down that lane very deeply, and come out to say, well, I'm not going to do that, but I went down the road deeply and learned why not. Um, and that's a skill that's going to serve you for the rest of your life. So congratulations to you, and on a personal note, I'm really proud of you. So I turn it over to Dr. Kaltenekker.
And let me start sharing my screen. Get started in a moment with the presentation. Let me find it. The correct one. There we go. So this is truly a special night, and Gina Cunningham and I will read through and acknowledge all of our seniors in the science research program. We will also acknowledge those students who received other state, national, international recognition. So we're very proud of that. When we read the Regeneron Science Talent Search top scholars, please know that the top scholars were chosen, one of 300 students to, across the country, to get selected for that honor. And then we do have a finalist who was one of 40 across the country. So we're really proud of these students, so thank you for all your hard work to everybody. So congratulations to the students. So we will begin.
Okay. Lauren Amico. Investigating risks for developing depression in parents of children with cancer.
And Luke Broide, elucidating mechanisms and impacts of age-related alterations in blood CNS barriers, a transcriptome study of the aging blood-brain barrier and the dry age-related macular degeneration retina. Luke is also recognized for being an International Science and Engineering Fair presenter, Junior Science and Humanity Symposium, New York State presenter, and a New York State Science Congress presenter.
Marley Cantor. Identical but not the same, utilizing the aging and lifestyle epigenome to discriminate monozygotic twins in forensic scenarios.
And Olivia Cantor. Birds of a feather age together. Telomere dynamics and social behavior predict lifespan in female Japanese quail. Olivia was also a Regeneron Science Talent Search top scholar and a Junior Science and Humanity Symposium, New York State and National presenter.
Joseph Cipriano. Calculating atmospheric disequilibrium of exoplanets as a possible biosignature.
And Alexa Cohen. Exploring parental expectations for children's educational degree attainment and its relationship with a child's actual educational degree, parental involvement in the college search process, and the child's overall well-being. Alexa is also an International Young Researchers Conference presenter.
Alex Deck. Manual identification of FISSS features in OCT images for the eventual training of a novel image identification algorithm to detect the presence of neoplasia.
And Lily Dittelsweig. elucidating the link between Alzheimer's disease and type 2 diabetes. Cur 6.2 APP PS1 exhibit behavioral deficits without an increase in amyloid beta plaque load. Lily is also a Giants Junior Science and Humanity Symposium, New York State poster presenter.
Lorraine DeSano. Exploring the relationship between human presence and in kennel stress behaviors in shelter dogs.
And Mia Dietrich. Epigenetic editing of CDK5 leads to sexually dimorphic stressed responses. Mia is also a Regeneron Science Talent Search top scholar, International Science and Engineering Fair presenter, and a Junior Science and Humanity Symposium National presenter.
Kristin Eichelbeck. A realistic model of the Faraday rotation of different light rays from SGRA to better understand the gas surrounding black holes. Kristin is also a Junior Science and Humanity Symposium, New York State presenter.
Dylan Urteil. I can't even imagine. An exploration of teens' reactions to a friend's parent affected by amyotrophic lateral sclerosis.
Skylar Golden. Blood and urine concentrations, pharmacokinetics, and effect on inflammatory mediators of flunixin meglamine following transdermal administration to horses.
Bailey Goldstein. Investigating differences in the relaxation of non-photchemical quenching and its implications for crop photosynthetic efficiency. Bailey is also a Regeneron Science Talent Search top scholar.
Ali Hafaz. Using artificial neural networks to accurately simulate carbon nanotube field effect transistors. Ali is also recognized as a Regeneron top scholar and a Junior Science and Humanity Symposium, New York State presenter.
Haley Harris. The development of dolphin creativity and investigation of dolphins' long-term ability to apply strategies when utilizing creativity to complete cognitive tasks.
Jared Alon. Modulus of elasticity of the ideal decellularized plant material scaffold for the production of cultured meat. Jared is also a Regeneron top scholar and national finalist.
Alexa Jindal. Investigating platelet-rich plasma to improve functional mobility in patient with knee osteoarthritis.
Rachel Kaner. How do others perceive me? An exploration of the influence of self-disclosure statements on viewer perceptions of emerging adults who stutter. Rachel is also a Regeneron top scholar and a New York State Science Congress presenter.
Anika Kumar. Stem cell treatment for stroke. A meta-analysis of effects on functional and pathophysiological outcomes.
Elizabeth Manowitz. Comparing incremental language processing in toddlers with autism spectrum disorder and typically developing toddlers.
Griffin Nenner. Comparing seasonal differences of infection prevalence and intensity of Botrychocytrium dentropatatus-infected green frogs in eastern nukes.
Elena Pychik. Enhancing the extracellular matrix bioscavelf. Investigating the role of matrix-bound nanovascular-associated interleukin-33 in the microphase transcriptome.
William Quinn. Improving the launch velocity capabilities of a hypervelocity launch gun using numerical simulation.
Gabrielle Ripka. The Hillary Clinton effect. Evidence that female politicians use more personal pronouns and fewer collective pronouns than their male counterparts.
Melissa Rivera. Analyzing light curves of white dwarf stars observed by tests in search of transits indicative of circumstellar material or eclipsing binaries.
Chloe Sampare. The Benjamin Button effect. Using children's optimal language acquisition to improve language learning in adults.
Tessa Schwartz. The effects of scaling on muscle force production in biological machines. Tessa is also an International Science and Engineering Fair presenter.
Drew Siskin. Determining effective cycle thresholds for evaluating colonization versus true infection of Clostridium difficile using expert assay. Drew is also recognized as an International Young Researchers Conference presenter.
Sophie Smucker. Peek-a-boo determining the latency to laughter in the case of three different jokes within infants aged six to 18 months. Sophie is also an International Young Researchers Conference presenter.
Jake Titlebaum. An analysis of recurrent proximal policy optimization models and reward functions in neural networks for financial market prediction.
And Chloe Weissman. The association between marital relationship adjustment and the number of children and families with pediatric cancer.
And a special thank you to all the teachers and staff of the Authentic Science Research Program, Ms. Stephanie Greenwald, Mr. James Gulick, Dr. Caroline Matthew, Ms. Megan Solomon, and Ms. Rhonda Santini. Thank you on behalf of all of us for all your support and guidance for our students during this three-year program.
Thanks to the entire faculty. That's a fantastic presentation. The students are truly to be commended, one and all. I'm always amazed at the quality, and just by listening to the titles, it certainly seems that they've done enormous progress in research of some very important and timely, uh, issues, so. And for Gina and Tim who read those into the record so beautifully, a special commendation for you. I don't think that was all that easy. But that was great.
The only part we missed, Ira, was when the students would tell us in layman's terms what it meant.
Yeah, yeah, you know, and that always was very beneficial for me.
We had to parse those topics ourselves to get that information.
And honestly, it's really my hope that next year we can have the parents and the students back together with us at the district office to hear the presentation, then to have them take a picture with the Board. I mean, it's always such a special time. And if any students listening to this believe, believe it, for us, it's wonderful for us to see you and to meet you and to hear your presentations. It's really a thrill. So congratulations, and especially for the seniors there. You certainly made your mark, and we'll be on to great things, we're sure. So congratulations, just a fantastic accomplishment.
Chris Walsh, do you have offhand the Science Symposium information we're going to be?
I can get it in a couple clicks.
Okay, because that would be great to share tonight, too, and we will all be in attendance for that. So special thanks to our students and their parents who are coming into this tonight. I don't know if any Board members have anything they wanted to say also. Congratulations to the parents, congratulations to the students, grandparents, everybody who gets to watch from home.
And truly, Jen, the parents do get congratulated because they provide usually tremendous support, both mental and physical and transportational, you know, as these projects go. So it truly is a family achievement, and to the students, above all, obviously, our sincere and heartiest congratulations.
There's nothing I can think of that they can't do, Ira.
Yeah.
Congrats.
We're very, we're very fortunate to have these students pass through our doors, we really are.
Jen, it's June 2 at 7:00 PM.
June 2 at 7:00 PM, it will be on our website, and we all here will be in attendance to root you on and to cheer you and congratulate you for all your work. Thank you so, thank you to Tim, thank you for Gina putting together those slides on our students. You know, that's one mark of Byram Hills that you have teachers and administrators who will take the extra time to make sure that you are presented for your hard work and congratulated for it. Gina and Tim, thank you so much for putting that all together.
It's great.
Awesome.
Thank you. Okay, so that concludes our annual special report, and it's always a welcome event. Moving on to unfinished business, the HC Quinden Middle School and Byram Hills High School master schedule update. We are ready to be updated.
All right, I am going to turn it over to Tim in just a minute, but I think that we learned quite a bit even before the pandemic about schedules and the impact of those schedules on students. We were fortunate to partner with the Stanford Challenge Success Program to research what is getting at the heart of issues that are difficult for our children. How much are they sleeping? How much time are they spending on homework? You know, how much, we started looking at their school day and looking at the stressors and, and what really helps children to learn more deeply. That was a passion of ours, as well as trying to figure out how they could be at their optimal learning capacity, right? How, how can we help them and how can we support them? One of the ways was a real review of the master schedules. I want to thank very much Tim Kaltenekker, Chris Walsh, Kim Lappel, and Christina Wilson, and, you know, of course, Kristin Swatner at the high school, Assistant Principal Colleen Romer, and Angelo Lancona. They put together quite a, quite a bunch of people who have gone out and explored how we can best help and best serve our children to be the, to be at their optimal learning capacity while lowering the temperature and the stress on a lot of that for them. We were realizing that they were overloaded. So how do we help these overloaded students? We've been looking at these schedules pre-COVID, and COVID actually gave us an opportunity to look at a change in schedules at the middle school and high school, an opportunity to pretty much test out some of our thinking about what's best for kids. So thank you to Kim and Chris and Tim, who put a lot of time into looking over these schedules, vetting them with parents, vetting them with teachers, vetting them with students, I know you all had student groups that were involved in that, too, speaking to the Board earlier in the year, and then coming to us right now with what we hope will be our final look before you go out to the parents and your principals' coffees. So I turn it over to Tim. Thanks so much, everyone.
Well, we thank our community for our eternal optimism during times like this where we try to take the good out of all of this and turn it into something for the future to benefit our kids. I know Kim and Chris put lots of time into working with their faculties, with students and with families to consult on these schedules. So we're going to have them each present their schedules to you once again and highlight some of the shifts and why we're making those shifts. And then if the Board has any questions, we're happy to have some conversation around that. So I'm going to turn it right over to Kim to first talk about the HCC schedule. So thanks, Kim.
Thanks, Tim. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for an opportunity to, to review this schedule. You know, Dr. Lamia and Tim are correct. We have spent a lot of time talking with many constituents to make sure that we have developed the most thoughtful schedule possible to take great care of our students. Just to backtrack, we explained this once before to board me. What drives our work at HC Quinden is the essential question that we've developed, and it focuses on active learning for our students, allowing them to take healthy risks, always to embrace rigor, and also to ensure that they have a healthy, balanced mindset, which speaks to the emotional wellness of our students. In addition to developing a schedule that supports that question, ready, step, we also, as Dr. Lamia spoke about, have really been impacted by our work with Challenge Success. And so we want to make sure that all the areas that spoke to us through Challenge Success, the feedback we received, the information about where our students needed the most support, we utilize that information to again inform our decision as we develop a schedule. What our schedule developed into, what we think really addressed this. So when you look at the middle school schedule, you'll notice that it maximizes time. We know that time is a critical resource in education. We can support our academic and social-emotional growth of our students through that valuable resource. We want to make the most of it. When you look at this schedule, you'll see that there are longer periods of time for students to be engaged, especially in seventh and eighth grade. But I want to point out that in the past, we didn't form our schedule. Our schedule wasn't based on blocks, but our teams could put them to use towards block. We shifted our thinking here, and we've created blocks of time that still allow flexibility for all of our teams. So when you look at sixth grade, you'll see that there's period one and two, it's a darker green, five and six, and period eight. Those are grade-level team times, that's when they're in their academics. We have students in sixth grade meeting with their teachers every day because the most important focus in sixth grade is to provide support for their transition to the middle school, and that we think it's important to provide consistency that they meet daily. However, teams have that flexibility, that if they decided they wanted to block their time, they do have that ability to block one and two, and five and six together for longer periods of time if they felt that really benefited their students. When you look at seventh and eighth grade, we know that our students have matured, they are, they have more stamina, and they can handle longer blocks on a regular basis that will provide them with further opportunity to engage in their work, go into depth in some of their subjects, and to truly engage in their work. And this will support work that we've developed, problem-based learning and enriched tasks. So you'll also see in seventh and eighth grade, on the, on the grade-level teams, they could split that time up. And here's something that we learned from our students. The block time is, is very good, it's engaging for our students, but there come some challenges. And so at times, there might be a need to split up that time and see every student, or allow every student to see all their academics in a school day, and the teams can do that as well. So there is flexibility in this schedule. Another benefit of this schedule is that world language, as well as health and music, will have longer blocks of time as well in order to engage and support their students in their learning. Another strength of this schedule is structured opportunities for student choice and engagement. Mr. Dr. Kaltenekker, if you could take the little dot and circle the SDL team time that is in there. We have developed something called SDL, and it's Student-Directed Learning, that is a time for seventh and eighth graders where they can have voice and choice. They can be involved in their, in their daily schedule, but with structure. Uh, and I think that's important to note, in adolescents, we need to still provide them with structured support. So what SDL is, students can, they'll be with their teams, but they can choose to go to extra help. They can also possibly get enrichment. There will be time for group work. If they have projects and they're in, in teams or groups, they will be able to meet in those teams and group during this time. They can pursue passions, projects. We've recently done some work where students have thought about their careers and what passion they want to pursue in the future. And this could be time for them to do something like that. And there's also intramurals that will be offered, and there will also be time that they can do some independent work or go to the media center. The other two lessons learned that we know is that it's so important to support our children, their social-emotional development and their executive function. We've put in XPOD at the start of the day for all students. They will start school in small groups with a, an adult, a teacher, and a small group of students. This allows them to transition into school, organize their day, get extra help at times, be with a trusted adult, and just maybe have some, an opportunity to start their day at a little bit of a slower pace. We had it this year, we brought it into school this year, and it worked quite well. And then we also have, as I mentioned, longer blocks of time. And when it comes to the emotional, social-emotional support and executive function, we found that students were less anxious and less stressed during the school day because with the block schedule, they're seeing their academics every other day. We're reducing the number of academics they're seeing. They're spending more time with their teachers, and they're able to organize their work, whether it's their schoolwork or their homework. I wouldn't say easier, but they have an opportunity to have that structure to do so. And I'm looking at my notes, you have to excuse me. I, I just think what we've learned is that in order for students to fully engage, we need to give them opportunities for choice and support to organize and advocate, and we believe that this schedule has done that.
So Kim, with the student-directed learning time, seems like students will have a lot of choice during that period. And will there be some support or help with, at the beginning of the year, with helping students make those decisions and organizing how those students go about that on a day-to-day basis?
So the idea behind the SDL is that there might be times that a teacher will, in a schedule, pin a child, meaning that they will let them know that they, they, they need to go to a particular teacher because they might need to have some extra help or spend some time working in a small group with that teacher. So teachers actually can direct some students to attend STL with them. And then we know that middle school students sometimes need that direction from an adult. If they have all their work caught up and if they are on task and, and, and they have, I wouldn't say earned that autonomy, but we know that they can make, we can provide them with other choices. XPOD will allow them time to plan their day, to reach out to teachers in possible emails and say, I was, I saw that I didn't do as well as I wanted to on this test. May I come in and work with you during SDL time? And so XPOD will be in partnership with SDL to help provide some structure for the students as well.
Right. I think there's three things that are research-based in the schedule that I find that could, will really be beneficial to students. One is you're slowing the day down, there's less transitions for students. And at this age, sometimes that will just help students in terms of the cognitive focus of doing the deep learning, the rich tasks that we are shifting our curriculum toward. That's one. The second is we're building in support for students. The XPOD, the student-directed learning time, the longer time periods allows teachers to The longer time periods allows teachers to meet with students individually. That's also research-based where we're providing a lot of support for students embedded into the school day. So it's not all after school or in the morning. And then three is giving students some choice and autonomy as we help them navigate that in the middle school years. Students need to learn how to structure and organize their time and giving them some choice to make those decisions. And we can help students make those decisions in consultation with their teachers. So I think there's a lot embedded in this.
This, and just as we learned, when we started our schedule at the beginning of this school year, we started small, meaning that we had a, a structure that was more simplified in order to make sure we as a faculty understood what we were asking students to do. And then as a year progressed this year, we found other opportunities for enrichment or to connect with students, whether it be through XPOD or other avenues during the school day. With SDL, we're going to start out with a simple, strong structure. And then as we learn the opportunities, we'll then create more branches of enrichment. For example, maybe SDL students can attend music for a different grade and be mentors in that music class. That's a possibility, but we first have to master the, the bones of the schedule and then we can expand it out to even more opportunities for our students.
Great, Kim. Are there any questions from the board for Kim in the schedule?
Yeah, Kim, the, the schedule that's being proposed here, is this a probationary schedule? In other words, you're going to use it next year, employ it and then take another hard look at it at the end of the year or mid-year to see whether or not it's achieving what you want it to?
I think revising and reflecting on our work is, is critical. So I'm quite confident that we have flushed out most of what we want to see in a schedule and implemented it. But the truth is, we learn from our students and our faculty each and every day. So we are going to have to live it in order to make sure that there isn't any necessary refinements. I'd say that I'm, you know, Mr. and Co. and I are confident that this in itself, the bones are very, very good. How often we block or don't block? We're a faculty of learners. So if we need to find out that our students needs some tweaking in terms of the use of time, I think that would be what we would more likely see.
Appreciate that flexibility in it, that you have the blocks, but can also then change that. It's needed. Be responsive.
Just a comment. I love the implementation of the student-directed learning. I know that that's sort of taking place of the wellness that you've done this year. So will there be components of wellness with the student-directed learning? Or where will there be time in the schedule for that wellness component, which was, I think, great for the, well-received by the kids this year?
SDL really evolved out of wellness. Thanks, Laura. And so students will be, we will have guidance pushing in sometimes to work with students. They might be small group guidance groups that will be provided. Teachers will be able to give students option to go outside. That, so they're, we're going to be able to listen to our students, hear their needs and then, and address them. And I think that's what we've done with wellness this year. So the games and some other activities, those freedoms that the kids have enjoyed will be embedded within the SDL.
Kim, what was the choice to not have sixth grade be in a block?
If we blocked them, it meant that they would not see their academics every day. And although, and because of transitioning to the middle school and sixth grade is such a year of transition and we're doing so much to, to allow them to become more familiar and comfortable with a nine-period schedule and many different teachers, we felt that consistency was paramount. And that's why, and we also listened to the students and the teachers and they felt that the sixth grade, they could block it, but they wanted to make sure that it was, it was solid with the consistent approach of seeing kids daily.
Right. And that transition year is really important for these students too and get them used to seeing all those teachers.
It's a big jump.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Kim, can you talk just a little bit about professional development and supporting teachers for these larger blocks? Or Tim even, because that's, you know, something we do have to think about if teachers are teaching in larger, longer periods.
Right. And we're doing this for both middle and high school. We've been partners with an organization that's been consulting with us on problem-based learning, authentic learning and the use of time. And they've been in our district for many years now, offering workshops and courses. And we're working with that organization, those consultants to help us this summer. We will be training teachers, many of whom are, have been trained already and taken our courses. So teachers have been really familiar and are comfortable with the use of time, have engaged in that professional learning and have already been implementing a lot of, of the types of structures that work with blocks of time. For example, how do you manage kids and have kids manage their own time during a long block? How do you create help boards or experts who can help students when a teacher might be working with a small group? There's lots of strategies that our teachers have been building up over the years that we're now going to bring into a summer session for our faculty and continue that training over the next two years with our faculty so that they are used to planning and rethinking time a little bit differently. Especially when you have classes in long blocks, just planning that time period, you can't plan it like you normally would, a 45-minute period. You have to think about the use of time differently. And also if you're seeing kids every other day or not in the daily schedule, you need to think about your continuum of a unit a little bit differently. So we have some experts who are really helping us design units and are working with our teachers. Thank you.
So I just wanted to mention one thing really quickly. To go from the idea of changing the schedule to laying it out, implementing it, incorporating all the various constituencies to it, I, I just, I just want to say well done. And most importantly, at the focus is our kids and, you know, giving them some change. If it doesn't work out, we'll change it again. But just want to thank you all for the energy around this and coming to a fruition.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
It's, it was interesting how the pandemic really was the accelerant on this issue that's been kicked around for a while. But, you know, I think anybody who heard the presentation will agree that a lot of thought has gone into this. And we're very confident of your success here, Kim and Tim.
We had the luxury of experimenting with some of these elements and actually invented some new ones just because we implemented them this year. It got us to see time a little bit differently this year. And we will segue to Chris where he can go over his schedule. And Chris was on a trajectory and maintained his schedule to implement a new master schedule. So Chris, you want to jump in and set us up for your schedule now?
All right. Thanks, Tim. And thank you, everybody, for giving me a chance to speak here tonight. You know, it was funny when you were going over the, the science research seniors a couple of years ago, when we started the process to look at our master schedule. One of the things that we offered our teachers was the chance to shadow a student for a day so that they could actually go through and experience everything that those kids were experiencing. So I jumped on the opportunity to do it as well and was able to shadow one of those science research students. And it was funny, I, science research was one of the classes that I had to go into that day. And I would have thought it was a public speaking course. They had me go up and do two minutes on some topic that I had never heard about and I had to make it sound like I knew what I was talking about. So. But ultimately going through that schedule and work, walking through the schedule with that student during that day, I personally realized how exhausting our, our former schedule was. Really, there was no downtime at all. One of the great things that I, I like about Challenge Success is that it is so student-focused. They really break it down to their work to look at those, the overall student experience in those seven categories, where it's workload, you have academic engagement, sleep, academic integrity, teacher care, parent expectations, extracurricular activities. Looking at all of those things to see how those kids are actually experiencing, experiencing the school. So we started out very theoretical and we looked at it as, all right, well, our master schedule is really going to reveal our true beliefs, our attitudes, values and our priorities. And we had to take a hard look at what our drop schedule, what it said about our priorities. And I want to go back to the time when that schedule was implemented. It was implemented because they needed certain things at that time. They needed to make sure that they increased the time of students in a classroom. They increased the number of courses that kids could take. They increased the overall amount of time that students were spent on content. And at the time, it was, it really worked very well for what they needed. Now, you know, our community has evolved, learning has evolved and we're definitely at a point right now where we understand how to go about teaching in a way that could improve the overall student experience. So the work with Challenge Success started early on and we were able to survey the students. And when we unpacked that survey, it, it made us take a deeper look at what we were actually doing. You know, the students reported high levels of stress, anxiety, competitiveness, and really just like an overall feeling that our students were doing school. You know, they were going through the motions. They were doing it really well and they had been, you know, they had been brought up to do it really well. And we had a lot of really great outcomes. So that, I think, hurt us in a, in a way to say, why are we going to broke something? Why are we going to fix something that's not broken? And, you know, for us, we had to go back and go back to those seven categories and figure out whether we were able to go to sleep at night thinking about whether we were doing all we could to improve that overall experience. So the, the whole process really started from that. And looking at it, we compiled a, a master schedule steering committee made up of stakeholders from each department. We had a number of people from the community come in to help us going back to the fall of 2019, where we had empathy interviews where our faculty and staff were able to meet with different members of the community to get their insights into whether or not the master schedule revealed our, our true, you know, our, 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 our true goals and whether it reflected our ability to achieve our mission. So we also went out, we went to so many different visits to area schools, very similar to ours. Those that had had schedules that worked for them for a number of years, those who had just switched, those who were thinking about switching. And we took all of that information, we broke it up as a faculty and we tried to piece it back together. And what we came up with is the Byram Drop. Now, this Byram Drop, I think, better reflects who we are as a community. I think it pays respect to the student experience. And I think it really does take into account all of that great learning that we had this year with our master schedule under these trying circumstances. So the first thing you'll notice is that we start off every day with office hours. So they are going to go from 7:45 to 8:10. And this year, we had small group tutorials or independent e-learning where the students were able to have a little bit of extra time in the morning to get themselves set up, to meet with teachers or to even, you know, do homework leading into the day that they weren't able to do the night before. And what we really saw when we had that opening period was that the whole tenor of the school became much calmer at the beginning of the day. Whereas before, everybody was running in off the buses, people were getting dropped off. They were running to get to class to make that first bell. Now we see it, it's a much more, a much more cultured beginning to the day. And students, if they need to, can use that extra time that they have, if they are going to get dropped off, to sleep a little bit later. And we know the American Medical Association tells us that students in high school should be getting anywhere from eight to 10 hours of sleep a night. And our students unfortunately are only averaging about seven hours a night at best. And that doesn't include the, the weekends. So if this is a way that we can give people a little bit extra sleep when they don't need to meet with teachers, then I think it's a great way to do that. Now, we'll also, just like in Kim's case, that student-directed learning, we will have teachers who are requiring students to be at those office hours. So if a student is struggling, they need extra, you know, a, a session with a teacher, they will be called into those office hours. Now, those office hours are, are, are not the same thing as extra help. Extra help is still going to continue at the end of the day. Our buses are still going to arrive at anywhere between 7:25 and 7:35. And then students will have the ability to meet with teachers before school as well if needed. So this is a, it's an eight-day block, an, an eight-day rotation. So the eight-day rotation will repeat and there are no days that are a little bit unusual like our A-Day is, was back when we had a drop schedule. An important feature is that the amount of time for each period is increased to 64 minutes. And we are doing that because we know through brain research, educational research, instructional research, that we can actually pull more out of that 64 minutes with meeting less over that eight to eight period block, but do it in a way so that the teaching will actually become much more student-centered. So it's almost impossible to lecture for 64 straight minutes. It's just not something that any human can really do day in and day out. So what that is going to do, it's going to allow our teachers to design lessons that have much more workshops. They might have station work. They might have collaborative work, independent research. There might be a small lecture piece built in, but it's going to be a much more dynamic lesson when it gets up and running. And I think if we look at the achievement levels down the line, we'll see that they either exceed or, you know, they'll, they'll either be the same as or exceed where we currently are.
Chris?
Yes.
You, you raised an issue that I wanted to ask Kim, but I think you're on it. Uh, which was how are you going to measure success by these, these schedule changes? And is the measurement of success different for, for the middle school than it is for the high school? But I'll let you tackle any one, but I'm just curious how, how you're going to measure it.
Yeah, it's, it's a great question. And I think what we're going to look at are the things that we have been looking at. You know, in terms of the, the schedule, we have continued to partner with Challenge Success. They just gave our survey again in February. So that will be something that we're going to continue to do long-term. But in the short term, what we will do is teachers know when kids are getting it. We'll be looking at their grades on, you know, the formative assessments. We'll be looking at region scores. We'll be looking at AP scores. We'll be looking at, you know, those, those different types of assessments that we see, whether they're, you know, SATs, ACTs. We'll see how they all look when we implement this schedule. Look, region's grades are going to be a, a big one. One of the things that we learned when we were going out, and one of the reasons why we took this so slow was that one of the schools who was a Challenge Success school in Massachusetts, in Bedford, they, they implemented the schedule a little too early. And they saw their scores in math and English on the Massachusetts state exams fall. And that was something, we know the community will not tolerate that. We know that's not something that we're going to be able to sustain long-term. Now, if it's something where we see blips, where looking at the feedback from those regions exams where we, we might be able to tweak something easily with a small change in the way that we're, you know, delivering the, the pacing of the curriculum, we'll do that. But I think we, we feel like looking at achievement, looking at those scores and then looking at the, the qualitative surveys are going to be really important for us going forward.
Chris, if I can add, if I can add a comparison also to looking at the state standards. So the board has heard me write about and speak about a lot of the shifts and the, the change in the New York State learning standards. There's been revisions over the past five years or so. And those standards are shifting to more higher-level learning standards and the less emphasis on the lower-level standards. Like if you think about the verbs of learning. And the less emphasis on the lower level standards, like if you think about the verbs of learning, there's less verbs around recall or memorize or list, which are lower level tasks. Not that they're not important, they're just becoming less emphasized to the higher level types of verbs such as analyze, evaluate, judge, compare. Those are some higher level thinkings. And the longer blocks of time and the shift in the schedule allows us to go deeper into that content. And local assessment, so we, Chris mentioned a lot of the state tests and the standardized tests. Each department has common local assessments as well, and they'll be looking at that data to see how that might shift over time as well.
Great. I wanted to just chime in. I, I think that one other criteria to potentially look at is absenteeism. With an improvement in mental health and stress, you might, you might, you're, you're taking that load factor down a little bit to, to build some space into the calendar and to give them a longer lunch period, which I noticed too. So I think that would be interesting to see what that looks like, you know, over time as well.
I think looking at other disciplinary data as well, Mike, to add to that.
Chris, and you know, it's one of those things where I was just thinking the, the other day. I think I can count the number of disciplinary issues we've had this year on one hand. And it's really incredible to see the, almost the utter drop-off of it. And, and look, I, I know that there are a lot of things that go into it, not just the schedule. But I, I just think the, the different approach in the way that we're going about our schedule, I think it creates some opportunities for us to lower the temperature of the building.
So Chris, one quick question, and, and just let me echo the comment earlier on both the middle school and the high school schedule about just how thoughtful the whole process has been. So it's, it's great. The seven AM health, seven AM economics, any, any way that the schedule could potentially address that? Or is it, is it still difficult to fit that in when someone's taking, you know, some of the other course load that they typically might want to take?
Yeah, it, it is a little bit difficult, especially when we have, you know, there's a certain group of students with the seven AM health. You know, those science research kids are gonna, they're gonna need to have that there. We're looking at the numbers there now, they are getting a little bit less. But it's still something we're, we're going to need to have next year. But we can do it in a way where it, it's not seven AM anymore. We can use those office hours and take back, you know, the twenty-five minutes there. So at least we get a little bit of that back.
Could I just ask, I'm sorry, one question to both Kim and Chris. When you were making these schedules, what consideration was given to homework? To the homework assignments that these students are getting on a nightly basis?
So to look at the middle school schedule, the block schedule helps to mediate a little bit of the homework. Students will only be having two core academic subjects like English and social studies one day and then maths and science the next day. That will help them pace their homework a little bit better. And then built within the day, that SDL time can provide some time for students to do some homework if necessary. Because we do, we want them to get, when they go home, to have free time and time to enjoy other pursuits. And the same with XPOD. Sometimes they'll be seeking help, they can go see teachers or do homework during XPOD as well. So we've tried to build in some time that allows for either them to complete some of their work in a structured environment with the support of the staff. And also to help organize and reduce some of the work through the block schedule.
And Ira, I interviewed students at the high school and did focus groups with students this year to talk to them about their experience. And one thing that came up several times was the fact of having, not having the class every day, gave them sort of a break from that particular homework assignment where they could really focus on the other classes that they had. So as you see in the schedule, students will have class, if you look at one A. For example, one A will be five times in an eight-day cycle. So it gives them a bit of a break and allows them to then concentrate on the other one. So instead of having maybe five, six academic subjects of homework a night.
Well, then it demonstrates the thoughtfulness that went into this.
Thank you.
Unless it was just a happy.
The other, the other part of it is that, you know, the lunch is now increased almost double what it was. So with a forty-three minute lunch, it'll actually allow the kids to eat and even start tackling some of their homework. We were never able to do that before, twenty-six minutes, it was really get them in and get them back into class. So we know we'll have a whole, you know, group of students that are going to want to take that time and do their homework there as well.
You know, Chris, the, what, just to add on to the ways in which you can maybe measure the, the success of this. For the seniors next year, they'll be the first ones to go through the schedule. They experienced the other schedule last year. When they go to college, I know it's always hard once they scatter, but I know you from time to time do check in with the college kids. It'd be interesting to know whether this schedule gives them an easier transition to college, given that typically in college, you're not going to have every class every day. You're going to have longer blocks. It seems intuitive that would be better, but it'd be an interesting question to ask, you know, a year and a half from now.
I know Christina Wilson's on here and she is already thinking about that and looking at our, looking at our alumni survey.
I want to thank both you and Kim so much and everyone who worked on these schedules. It's amazing for our students to know they're not going to have tests in every subject on one day. They won't have to juggle all that, which they never had to, but that won't come up now at all since it's all spread out. Will you end up reevaluating this and making sure that the students are able to focus and keep an attention span, especially on the day that maybe they have a lab and science together? And our teachers.
It's a, it's a great point you bring up, Lori. We are looking at that. And I know that, you know, like Tim had said, we are partnering with ID Ecore. You know, every Wednesday, they've been offering coaching opportunities. We're going to offer a, a whole series of professional development over the course of the summer. And then all through next year, we're going to be bringing in those, bringing in that organization again and dedicating a lot of time to it. You know, I think this year being able to actually go up to an hour in some cases in, using the schedule, that's giving them a little bit of an ability to, to sort of test the waters. So I think once we get them, you know, in that timeframe, being able to start getting comfortable with it. I think we will obviously see people sharing their best practices. And, you know, we have such talented faculty, you'll start seeing them raising their, their, their levels in the classroom. You know, that's one of the things, we, we're not walking away and saying, here it is now, you know, revisit this in twenty years. Like one of the questions that we, that came up is, is it, is it necessary for us to, to couple the labs and the lecture for science now? And because of the longer times, would it be something that we would look at where we uncouple them? And we, you know, we, we meet at a different day for that lab. So that's something that the science teachers I know will go into next year looking at. And we may come back and say, let's revisit this, this might be a better way for us to do it. The other thing is the office hours, we have a number of people that feel like, well, maybe it would be better if we could alternate them. You know, have some in the afternoon, you know, I'm not a morning person. I might not be able to get there, but I might really need it. So those are things that we're going to look at as well is, is the, the possibility of alternating it, would that work for us? I know Kim is, she doesn't want to think about that because of shared staff. So shared staff between Kim and I, you know, having these new schedules, those are like some of the, you know, the, the peace talks that have gone on over the years. You know, how do we make sure that our shared staff are able to get between buildings and do it in a way that, you know, is respectful of their time?
Thank you for being so thoughtful and flexible, because I think in the end, it's really going to thrive.
Any, any other questions from the board on this?
Great. So do you want to thank everybody? I want to thank Kim and Chris again. I know you got lots of input and spent a lot of time putting this together with a lot of various people in your buildings, teachers, administrators, parents and community members when Chris did the empathy interviews. So we will constantly reflect on this. We believe in continuous improvement. So that means we'll cycle back to this, we'll look at every aspect, we'll keep coming back to how we can refine and revise.
I, I sure would like to have maybe a report either halfway through next year, just from first glances. Feedbacks on the schedule and how it's running, I think this is very exciting. And I certainly would like to have a, a cycle back and check on what the feedback has been to the each building.
Thank you, we will. We'll bring Kim and Chris back to talk about it.
Absolutely, especially Kim, get her back here, that's right, we have to do that.
I especially want to thank you that during the pandemic, we're just pandemic focused, that you remained forward-thinking about what this should look like in, in subsequent years for these kids. Because I know so many districts have been just so consumed by the pandemic and running regular operations every day. This took a lot of extra out of both of you and all the people you worked with. So thank you.
Yeah, thanks very much, both of you and your, and your teams. They're very thoughtful, very exciting.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks. Kim, thanks for joining us.
Yep.
Chris is going to stick.
Thanks very much.
Thanks.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks. Okay, well, that was, that was exciting. Next on the agenda is ten point two. School counseling advisory committee update, I believe Ms. Wilson has been patient with us this evening. Let me turn it over to you initially, Dr. Momia.
Okay, thank you Christina for coming. Christina is our Director of Guidance, sixth grade through twelfth grade. And she is here with Chris today to speak with us. So I, I don't know if I'm going to turn it over to Chris, Tim.
Both of us, let me just do a quick introduction. I want to thank Christina. So we, we have been looking at over the past year, some new data, which looks at our recent graduates. And Christina and Chris have been digging through this data. So I'm going to have Christina take a look at this to unpack what that means for our guidance department going forward and the college admissions process and how we do the college advising. So she's sort of going to give us a little summary of the data and then talk about what she is thinking of as next steps. And also involving the school counseling and advisory committee, which is a new committee. So this is part of our annual update with the, the new regulations around the school counseling regulations that Christina has been so thoughtfully implementing this year. And this will become a new lens into that process that will help guide revisions into our plan. I'll either turn it over to Chris, Chris, Chris or Christina, Chris, do you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I just wanted to thank Tim, thank you and Jen for helping us get this data. I know when you, you know, you brought it to us, Christina and I, we thought it was like New Year's, New Year's, Fourth of July and Thanksgiving all rolled into one. So this, I think it, it points to a lot of the, you know, the, the information that we felt like we knew, but then it, it really allows us to dive a little bit deeper. So we're really excited about it because we think ultimately it will help our community make more informed, better choices about their, their college decisions.
Thank you.
Perfect. That's perfect. And, and just the correlation there with the school counseling advisory committee, and I'll get to that at the end. But we're hoping that the school counseling advisory committee can take a look at this with us next year, dive a little bit deeper to look and, and study this data because it's, it's, it's really interesting. And so tonight, I'm going to give you some information, just first of all, about what this is. The, the National Student Clearinghouse, it's a biannual report. They are a non, non-for-profit, non-governmental agency that helps institutions facilitate compliance with FERPA. So that's where we got this information from. And what you're going to be looking at is data from the classes, the graduating classes of two thousand thirteen to two thousand twenty. So that's the data that we're looking at tonight. We started to look at this, as Chris mentioned, we were excited. This was just so interesting. I remember that moment where we're all sitting around and I'm not even a data person and this was exciting. So we were thinking about like, do our students persist? Where do they persist? Why do they persist? And we started to realize all that we could take from this and how this could really help us in our work with students and in families to be more informed about the advising process. So we're going to talk about that. And then we're also going to talk about how we can learn from this. What can we learn from this data that will enrich our work with students and families? So I will not hold the suspense any longer for you, but guess what? Our students persisted. We, we know that. And, you know, I think we've known that from the standpoint of feedback and everything that we've always received from our students. But it was so great to actually quantify that and have data that gives us very strong information that says, indeed, ninety-one percent of our students persist. And so when I'm talking about persistence, what does persistence mean? And for the purpose of this discussion, what persist means is that for a student who enrolls in college right after graduation in the fall, do they return for a second year? Okay, so for the purposes of this discussion, that's how we're using the word persisted. So ninety-one percent of Byram Hills graduates enroll in a college or university immediately following graduation. You might say ninety-one percent, how come it isn't greater? And we'll get to that, that's something I think we might want to study, but just, you know, a few things to consider. We do have students who do a gap year. We do have students who do a postgraduate year for things like athletics and NCAA. And we also have students who take advantage of things like January admits Boston University, Miami, George Washington University. They admit students, but they say you can come in, in January sometimes. And a lot of our students typically will take advantage of that.
Christina, does this take into account transfers? So it's that they come back for a second year regardless of where?
Correct. This is actually, persisting means if they started school, are they enrolled in that school or another school the following year? Are they enrolled somewhere? Okay, so that's what that persist means. So for these students, ninety-one percent actually enrolled in a school in the fall immediately after graduating.
So Christina, I know that we pride ourselves on very high acceptance rates to, to schools. So what would be the difference between, let's say, something, sometimes we'll get like a ninety-seven percent, you know, going off the four-year schools and this ninety-one percent here? And you touched on some of them.
Yeah, so I think, you know, there are some factors there that I think we need to look at a little bit more closely because I think this data is, is a hundred percent, you know, it's as accurate as it can be. But we also at times had students that maybe didn't go to the college that we thought they had or they are listed as going to a few different colleges. So they're going to show up as not actually going to one of the colleges. So there's a little bit of nuance there that if, with more time, we're going to be able to, to look at that and see why, why those numbers are just different. So did I answer that, Mr. Walsh?
You got it. Yes.
Okay, so on the next slide, what you're going to look at, this is the, so where do our students go? And a really high percentage of our students, fifty-eight percent of our students actually go to private schools. And thirty-one percent go on to public schools. And I think you see obviously the inverse of that being the national trend. That certainly more students go to the public universities. And that's, that's the national trend. So I think that's very interesting data and certainly information we want to be able to share with our parents. On the next page, you're going to be looking at the six-year graduation rate. So we have eighty-six percent of our students in the classes of two thousand thirteen and fourteen only. These are the only two classes that we could, we could know the six-year data on. So we know that eighty-six percent of our students actually earn a degree of some sort within six years of graduating from Byram Hills. On the next slide, the timed graduation, and I, I think this might be the one that's most impressive to me, that our students at a rate of seventy-two percent complete a degree within four years of leaving Byram Hills. Seventy-two percent, and you can see what the national average is there, it's twenty percent. We have eleven percent of our students go on in the fifth year to earn a degree and an additional three percent go on in their sixth year to earn a degree. The next slide is the freshman to sophomore persistence. So of the students who did enroll in high school, sorry, in college after, right after high school, ninety-seven percent returned for a second year. And the national average there is ninety percent.
So that's the ninety-seven percent of those initial ninety-one percent.
Correct. So of the ninety-one percent that go, ninety-seven percent returned for a second year.
That is much higher than I anticipated.
Yeah, that was impressive. That was impressive. This next slide is from the, the years two thousand thirteen to two thousand nineteen, the top ten colleges where graduates persist. where graduates persist. And we came up with this list. We were given the the most common institutions that our students attended the fall immediately after their graduation. And what we did is we picked out the schools that had the highest rate of persistence over that period of time. So the highest rate of persistence, the highest rate of students returning for a second year was at these universities. And I know Mr. Schellman is very happy to see Lehigh on here. I was very happy for you that it was on here and I'm happy that it's on here.
As, as am I.
Good.
Christina, why is that an interesting metric to look at in terms of your work as a guidance department?
Sure, I, you know, we often are, especially within the last few weeks, you know, students are are making really important decisions, sometimes between one, you know, one, two, maybe three different schools. And we're asked, I think, as counselors, sometimes to like come in and jump in as like the tiebreaker, you know, like, you know, impart some knowledge on, um, on, on these colleges to, to students. And truly, our students are never going to make a bad decision. They're going to do great wherever they they go. But I think to be able to show, um, parents and students some data along these lines that our students, you know, if they go to some of these schools, they're probably going to have a stronger, um, connection, maybe with faculty, uh, be more involved when they're, when they're there, have, um, you know, and and have a better experience, I think would be really important, maybe helpful to them in in their decision-making.
Right. And it's a play on both, you know, not just the university and speaking to the universities, but also the student and your ability to match them. Your student, you know, can belong in different places and are you helping me find that school that's a good match for me that I will want to stay at?
Right. This, uh, last slide is, um, are a few colleges where we've noticed where our students did struggle to persist. So over that period of time, we had, um, multiple, uh, students who did not return for their second year. And, um, we're to caution about this list, and this is definitely an area for us to study a little bit. I wouldn't want anybody thinking that there's anything at all wrong with these colleges, especially, you know, you think of something like Binghamton University. We know that places like Binghamton have a guaranteed transfer program with Cornell University. So they do well in their first year out of Byram Hills. At Binghamton, they can, uh, transfer. We know that, um, there are a lot of different things going on, so never want anybody to just look at this list and take it out of context. But this is an area for us to to, uh, focus in on and see what's going on at these schools where our students don't necessarily go back for the second year always.
Christina, that's a great point and and really worth looking at because is it because they transferred into other schools that were, uh, a top choice for them, you know, when they, when they took this? Or is it that they struggled in these actual schools and either didn't go back to school the following year? Or went to another school and thrived? So, interesting.
I think what's great about this is we can marry this information with the information that we already have in Naviance about students. And we can really isolate things like, uh, what was the major of the student that, um, you know, didn't come back for a second year? Uh, if we know that, um, you know, we actually know the students and and we can figure that out. And, um, I think this is going to be just so, so important to our work and to be able to, um, you know, have have parents and students take advantage of this data in, you know, in in their planning. And that, you know, go ahead.
Yeah, just, we also are only going back seven years. So there's probably a low in here, like a low number of students as well. So that's something.
Except Binghamton.
Right. And and lastly, so, you know, kind of our next step, where do we want to go with this? And, uh, you know, what information needs further study? I've already, you know, pointed out a few things that have jumped out at us that we'd like to to dig it a little bit deeper when, um, when we have the time. So we definitely are going to study some more of this information, and we would love to involve the school counseling advisory committee to take a deeper dive into that data. I think that would be a really, um, important, important work for them. And, um, we can turn it around and really disseminate that information to to families in a usable format. We, within the department, we have some questions about major and we have a hypothesis that, um, possibly we'd like to prove and see if, um, students who have a little bit more of a career in mind or a career pathway or a focus, um, coming out of Byram Hills, if they, um, have a greater, um, chance of persisting, if they persist at a higher rate in college, or if possibly if they don't. And what can we do to better refine our advisement, um, system? And what can we do to help students determine possible career pathways earlier on in high school so that they feel that the college that they choose is is more aligned with their interests? And, um, so that's an area that we want to explore. And also, um, we'd like to be able to provide this information to, to, um, to families, to the public. And we definitely want to be able to do that, but it's a lot to digest. So how can we put this in a more concise and usable form, uh, format for, um, families to access and look at and start asking us questions and use it as an an entry point for the whole, um, college advising process?
Christina, I have never known anyone as brave as you. To look closely at this information and it's something that we've all needed to know for a very long time. To look at it, to ask the questions about it and not be afraid to address anything that might need to be addressed or to answer questions that, you know, we may have posed before. I mean, all of this is very new information for us. And when, when Tim and I were first starting to talk about it, we were like, oh, my gosh, what are we going to find? And and I think this is fascinating and it gives you and the guidance counselors and Chris Walsh a lot of opportunity to explore when and how these things happen. And it can help to inform curriculum for the future potentially, or even college choices. I mean, it has a multitude of of, um, good benefits that could come out of it. Thank you for doing this work. You know, we we do recognize that you have not been sitting in that seat as the guidance person for a decade. And this is like what somebody with a decades' worth of experience we would have expected from. So thank you. This was awesome.
Thank you. And thank you for having faith in me and actually going out and finding this data and, um, and putting it in front of me. So I I thank you for that. And I think, uh, thank you, uh, you know, the board for giving us this opportunity to talk about what I think is very important, which is our alumni. And, um, I'm happy to answer questions. I hope Chris and Tim will jump in if there's anything that you feel I I left out.
Christina, just one thing I wanted to note is that I know that with some of our schools, we have a very small number of students uh, who attend there. We want the community to know that we're going to be very sensitive with those small schools who you would know right off the bat who the kid was. Um, so, uh, we are taking into account the number of, um, kids who are going to each of these places and only sharing those ones where you couldn't pick, you know, you couldn't pick out what had happened there.
Absolutely.
And Chris, I guess the other thing too is if the sample size is too small, it just makes the data not as practical as if if with the ones that more kids go to, then you really could start to draw some interesting conclusions. But no, thank you. It's really interesting, Christina. Thank you for the presentation. Since you're here with us tonight and and now we're right past the college process, just what are your high-level observations on the year? I mean, it's such an interesting year. And I guess the question that I would have is it, was it much less predictable using like things like Naviance and data that it was in the past? Dramatic rise in the number of applicants to many schools and the fact that the criteria really, for the first time in a long time, has shifted with whether it's optional testing or just what the pandemic did to, you know, various, um, uh, you know, resumes of of kids that just might look different. So was the whole thing more unpredictable than it usually is?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, there were no predictive models this year at all. Naviance, you know, and I'm not going to say we could have just thrown it in the garbage, but you know, it it was, you really couldn't rely on on, uh, on Naviance as much. But in fairness, neither could the colleges or universities who who were faced with, um, not being able to use their predictive models either. So I think, um, the test optional piece really, um, was very difficult for our most students applying to the most competitive schools because they saw the highest numbers of students ever applying to colleges and universities. We had students who were applying because they didn't need to send in their their test scores. And for our students who are really, um, really well, um, should should have been accepted and they were absolutely admissible to that school. And in some cases, they didn't even get a second lock and that was very difficult. And we've had to have some, some tough conversations and hard conversations and and really help students, um, come to terms with that. So I'm hoping, uh, that that lessons next year, but I don't know that that's going to be the case. We already know that about fifty percent of the colleges and universities who were test optional last year are have already put out a statement that they are going to be test optional next year. So I do feel we are like we are going to be in a similar position. But I think we are are fueled with a bit more information now to be able to advise students, um, a bit differently going into the process into their senior year.
Well, I I guess a question I would have for you, Christina. Not that we can send everybody to Lehigh, but, um, really, uh, whether or not you believe that the rigor of the Byron Hills education, which is something I think we treasure, whether that still is worth the price we have the students pay for?
Absolutely. I I just, I think it's, it's, it's diluted because there are just so many more applicants out there. And so whereas, um, our students are still doing absolutely amazing things and they are, they are getting, ultimately, they are getting the colleges and universities. They're just not getting it in the abundance that they, uh, usually did. They usually had a lot more options and a lot more um, competitive schools that are accepting them. They might get one or two now, but they're not going to get.
Is is that going to change as the enrollment starts to dip? Uh, in the next X years, you you see this as a, as a pattern, as a, so something that, a way of life, as it were, for the Byron Hills senior?
I, I, you know, I think until there's a real shakeup on the college level and, uh, it is going to continue that way. I think test optional is changing some things. I think we have to really see how that's, um, going to change everything. But I think the most competitive schools will always still, uh, will look for for tests. And fortunately for our students, they do prepare for those. They do quite well on them. It is is a way that our students do set themselves apart aside from all the other amazing and rich opportunities that they have. So we will do fine. I just think we need to talk to families a little bit more about not having maybe as many choices that as they might have heard their, uh, people that have gone before them. And that's okay. We just have to, we have to change our advisement strategy, strategy to accommodate that.
Christina, a couple of years ago, I can't remember if it was last year or the year before, when you did your last presentation to us and you had that list of schools that you were going to be approaching because we'd sort of historically had not had great, um, responses from them. And it's funny because this year, even though you're saying that that kids didn't maybe get into as many schools, competitive schools as they would have, I'm hearing names that were on that list, like Duke and Vanderbilt, um, taking, uh, you know, much more kids from Byram Hills than they had in in previous years.
I know. What a difference a year makes. You know, it's, it is very interesting. And, uh, we, we, I have that list. It's kind of like tucked away in my office for the, the first second, you know, that they say we can get out and travel again. You know, we're going to those schools. We haven't forgotten about them, but it's kind of like nothing really mattered this year because it was just such a different, uh, different playing field. So I'd like to, I'd like to see how the dust settles a little bit, see how we do and and maybe think about a new list of of schools, um, some of which are still on there from last time that we need to go out and visit, talk to the reps.
Certain old kids who are accepted and their chant, their ability to do well in those schools could influence the acceptance of other Byron Hills students. We know that.
Absolutely.
So, you know, that could have an effect later on as well. Sorry, Scott. Go ahead.
No, no, that's okay. Um, had, I know that, well, obviously this year, colleges did not come to high schools in person, but they presumably did a lot of Zoom sessions. Did they, did you find that the same number of schools did Zoom sessions with our high school, like specifically our high school only? Or did they shy away from that? And I guess going forward, you know, do you, do you sort of make an effort to try to at least, I mean, do what you can to get them to actually come to do a session like for our kids specifically?
Sure, yeah. I, this last year, we had the most colleges and universities we've ever had do college visits. And I think it's because it was virtual. They didn't physically have to, to, you know, to come here. And I think it's going to be virtual next year because we're really not hearing that a lot of colleges are sending out their reps. So I, I assume that that's going to be, you know, equally, uh, as, uh, abundant. Um, and we, oh, I think what you're asking is, we always reach out to colleges and universities that we don't see on our list as having scheduled to visit. And if we don't see them, we reach out to them and ask them, um, if they want to set up a time. But this past year, we, I think we saw almost all the colleges that we usually see and definitely, and then some.
Great. That's great.
I I do have one question, which actually was asked of me last year, and I forgot to raise it, but what Scott's question kind of triggered me, which is to the colleges where students get accepted, but they turn them down. Have you, is is the track record that it becomes then harder for a Byron Hill student to gain acceptance like it over the years? Let's say, uh, there were a couple of schools I know, and there's no purpose naming them. We haven't had great success. But a couple of years ago, one or two got in, they didn't go. And I've said, my God, that's going to put us back five years. Is there truth to something like that, the way the admissions committees operate?
No, I think, I think perhaps at some schools that is the case. I think they like to see a trend. Um, and I think it's when we notice a trend too that our, you know, maybe our top students are choosing to go somewhere else. I mean, we live in the Northeast. There's some amazing schools in the Northeast. So to get them to go somewhere that's far, far away, but the expectation of that college or university is that our top students are going to go there. I think sometimes that just calls upon us to have conversations with the admissions people and let them know just the landscape. And it's, it's nothing personal, but, uh, just exactly what's going on. I I don't see that that happening too much. But I think we've pointed to that at a few schools as a, as a possibility. And those are the colleges we really want to, want to go out and speak to them.
You should just send them to Lehigh, Christina.
Fine with me.
I know what the problem is.
We have, we have gotten, uh, some direct feedback when we've gone out and, uh, the colleges have said to us, we do not want to be Byram Hills safety schools. So it does have a, uh, a negative impact on those kids who, uh, might want to apply there.
Well, you know, I was thinking of something else, that there's a school, a very elite school, I guess, that didn't take a Byron Hill student for years. And then one or two were accepted and they turned it down. And then I realized, I realized it hadn't been another number of years before we got in. Look, you can't tell students to go to a school simply to benefit, you know, future students that come, but it is part of the dynamic. It's part of, you can't help it. It's part of that.
Absolutely.
Maybe parents, uh, our parents. Do we have enough data to really advise parents of such things when they discuss schools their children are applying to?
We have, we have Naviance. So, you know, it's kind of like they can see it from themselves on on a scattergram, you know, who's been accepted and and, uh, accepted and and not. And, you know, usually it comes down to data that is, um, you know, can be measured and we know why, but sometimes we're just left wondering and and those, you know, that's where we need to do a little bit more to to talk to people.
It's, it's always an interesting world you live in there, Christina.
I do enjoy it and, uh, uh, thank you again for this opportunity.
Well, we, we hope, we hope you'll come see us again more frequently.
Happy to do so.
We enjoy your presentations and thank you so much for coming tonight.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Christina. Thanks, Chris.
Thanks, everyone. And I thank Christina. We're happy to have her helping us lead that.
Yeah, yeah, this is great. It's great to see you. Okay. Christina, have a pleasant evening.
Bye, Chris.
Okay, well, uh, Tim, you're you're two for two here. You're just racking up the points. I mean, look at this. This is terrific. We'll move to, what, ten point three? Okay, let me make sure. May I have a motion, please? Uh, are these firsts or second reads? I forget. Ten, three.
These are firsts.
Yeah, okay. My, 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 my have a motion, please, to adopt as a first read. Policy fourteen twenty complaints about curricular instruction materials, the, the, uh, regulations fourteen twenty R. Policy ninety-four twenty, evaluation of administrators, professional employees and support staff. Policy ninety-four twenty point one, building principal and classroom teacher evaluation. And then deletion policy three thirty, evaluation of administrators and teachers, and three forty, evaluation of support staff. May I have a motion, please?
Some of.
A second? Okay. Uh, Dr. Lamia?
Do you want me to take that?
Dr. Colton Eckert?
Dr. Colton Eckert, three for three. Go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, we have a few policies. I'll talk about the complaints about curricula and instructional materials. It was an old policy. We thought it would be timely to revise it. Um, so there's just some clarification of language and some of our procedures and who sits on a review committee. So if parents have complaints, it's a general policy. We try to resolve any types of issues around curriculum as at the building level, uh, with the classroom teacher, with the building principal or chair or director. Um, rarely does it climb up to the superintendent level, but should a parent not be satisfied with, um, trying to resolve that, uh, they could file a formal complaint and that would take you to uh, fourteen twenty R, which is the regulation, and that's the procedures that a parent would follow should they have a complaint that has not been able to be resolved at the building level informally. Um, so this outlines it. The, we only made a few tweaks to this uh, regulation from the old process, just defining who would be on the committee and. regulation from the old process, just defining who would be on the committee and clarifying some other language. So we do have a process in place and a policy for parents who do want, um, have complaints about our curriculum. But we do encourage our community to call the teacher or call the principal or chairperson director. Um, and generally we can resolve any type of issues that may be curriculum. So that's that policy. Gina, we'll talk about 9420. Gina?
Sure. Um, so first I just want to speak a little bit about uh policy 0340. That's evaluation for support staff and that's being recommended for uh to mark for deletion as the content of that policy is now in this new policy that I'm going to talk about 9420, which is entitled evaluation of administrators, professional employees and support staff that are not covered by 3012C and 3012D of the education law. So this policy recognizes that all of our uh staff members and uh administrators need to be evaluated every year annually and that we would support them in any areas that need improvement, skills and performance. It speaks to uh this being relevant for all administrators that are other than building principals. So this would be our chairs, our directors, that we are following state law as well as in line with our collective bargaining agreement in terms of evaluating them. It also recognizes professional employees that are non-teachers. So our school counselors, psychologists, social workers, et cetera, that again, we are following not only state law, the collective bargaining agreements, as well as the district's professional performance review plan. In the policy, it speaks a little bit about the professional performance review plan in that the superintendent or the designee is responsible for developing it, getting together with various stakeholders to ensure that there's not, sorry, uh, that there is uh any changes that need to be revised, that that is done and then presented to the board for your approval. And then finally, it also incorporates the evaluation of support staff. Uh, these are members of our organization that are in the CSEA, such as clerical or teacher aides, that again, we're evaluating them annually. We're providing support in areas of improvement. And then lastly, uh, the, the district, the superintendent or the designee is also responsible for ensuring that anyone who completes an evaluation or an assessment, that they have uh training to do so.
And this, um, that policy also relates to the next one, 9420.1. Uh, we also have another policy marked for deletion, 0330, which was the evaluation of administrators and teacher. All this needed to be updated and revised because of education law 3012C and now education law 3012D, which completely changed the evaluation system for building principals and classroom teachers. This one outlines the building principal and classroom teachers. And that follows our annual evaluation, our annual perform, annual professional performance review plan. The board has heard me talk many times about that. Uh, this policy doesn't give all the details, but it does outline the categories that are in our APPR. And it talks about the plan. We do have a plan which is on our district website and that the board approves annually. It distinguishes classroom teachers and principals who's covered by the law. And it does have a place for the teacher and principal improvement plans if you have a, a rating that is below effective. And um there's an appeals process, training is in place. And then there is of course, uh, reporting and public disclosure of teacher evaluation scores, which we do have a process in place for that as well. So this is a rewrite from the previous, the old policy that uh predated the new education law 3012C and D.
Any comments or questions from the board on any of these policies or the regulations? All right. Motion's been made and seconded to adopt as first reads and to mark for deletion, the policies listed. All in favor, please? Okay, thank you. And thank you, Dr. Colton Eckert.
Thank you. Thanks to Jason and Lara for the policy committee.
Yeah, Jason and Lara, thank you for your work. Special report number two, budget hearing five. We hope to accomplish this in about 90 seconds. So uh Kelly, 90 seconds, go. Budget hearing five. 90 seconds. Wow. Okay.
I can do it. So uh, this is the final presentation of the budget season, uh, hearing number five. Just as a quick review, our uh, our final, again, final presentation, the budget vote is next uh in two weeks, in May 18th, from 6:30 to 9:00 PM at uh HCC. Our total budget for next year, a point 75% increase, uh, $709,009 for the following year. Our tax rates, a lot of information on the March 23rd budget meeting. You can review that. It talks a lot about the tax rates and why they changed and why the different uh amounts per town. But for next year, a point 14% increase at North Castle, a 3.56 at Newcastle, Bedford 5.9, and Mount Pleasant a 5.89. Again, associated with changes in assessed value on a yearly basis and assessed values, again, are prepared by the town. Uh, and we just prepare the formula based on uh those assessment changes. Again, review the March 23rd board meeting uh presentation. Give me a, a call or an email if you have a question about your specific rate or your changes. I'd be happy to go through uh that with you and explain that a little further. So a one, a 1% tax levy increase uh for next year proposed. Um, that's lower than our maximum allowable. A maximum allowable tax levy is 2.57, so we're about $1.3 million below our maximum allowable. Uh, again, a point 75 budget increase, a total budget of 95,243, 544. Our budget notice, you should receive this uh about seven days before the vote. Looks exactly like this. I, I've been notified, people have gotten some, some of Bedford's uh school budget notice. So just I want to caution you, that was not the Byron Hill School District. Um, you should be receiving ours, uh, you know, about seven days before the vote, that Monday or Tuesday. And again, any questions, please give me a call or send me an email and uh check the district website for the budget information. Again, it is a live uh in-person budget vote over HCC. All the COVID precautions will be, will be in order. You are able to uh receive and request an absentee ballot if you go to the district website. Under Board of Education, it says absentee ballot. Click that, fill that out, mail it in, or you can drop it off. Uh, and we could send you an absentee ballot, uh, similar to the process you did last year. So again, in person, we look forward to seeing you uh come out and, and vote or uh request an absentee ballot. A little over 90.
Thank you very much, Kelly. Uh, just for the community, you realize, of course, that the budget was adopted by the Board of Education in our last meeting. This is just a mandatory follow-up to that. This year, as in past years, the board has strived to be as transparent as possible with the community in the budget development process. We believe have been successful. We believe we present, presented the community again this year with a budget that's responsive and responsible. And as Kelly told you, falls below the permissible range of increase that we could have included uh in the budget we present to the voters. All material is available to you on the website or at the district office. All we want, as in every year, is to you to be an informed voter and to please make time to come to the polls in two weeks.
I just want to thank the Finance Advisory Committee, Scott, yeah, and Michael for their collaboration this year. Uh, as always, this year it's been great and uh I really appreciate that.
And Ira for putting together a budget video with me, which we will send out to the families around the same time that they should be receiving the budget brochure.
Yes, yes, it'll be streaming, I think, on Netflix as well. And, and the ratings so far are just off the charts. So Jen and I are very, very happy about that. Dr. Colton Eckert, do we have any comments from the public on the budget hearing material?
No, there are no comments from the public.
Okay. Uh, 11.3 budget communication steps from here. While Kelly pretty much told you what they were, please look forward in your mailbox to get our budget brochure. And as Kelly also mentioned, please be sure not to confuse the Bedford District budget brochure, which actually I got one in my mailbox, with what is coming from ours. Ours is much more colorful and uh it's easy on the eyes. So please take time to read it and uh we hope is, again, you'll go to the polls as an informed voter. And with that, unless there are any comments or questions from the board, we will uh close budget hearing five and bring to a close the budget season, uh pending the outcome of the budget vote in two weeks. All right. Uh, that brings us to new business. Westchester-Buttonham School Board 2122 proposed budget and Board of Directors nominating slate and ballot. Scott, would you like to be heard on this briefly?
Sure. So this is um typically the time of year that we um get from West Putt, a couple of things, one of which is what the budget is for the following year. And just to remind everybody, so every member district pays dues into the association. And that's the source of, of um how this association covers its expenses. And then secondly, um for the officers for the coming year as well as the new directors. So there was a slate that was included in the packet, full disclosure. I am on the slate um for officers. But there's also again, you know, a number of new directors that are, that are being um put up for election. And the increase in budget is 2%. Um, West Putt for many years actually had a 0% increase for many, many years. And then it kind of caught up to the organization, uh, because obviously like some expenses rise. So um the attempt is to do a, a very modest increase and that equates to somewhere between $19 and $90 per district. We're probably not at the 90, Kelly, but I know we're not at the 19 either. We're probably, my guess is what, $70 or something like that?
About 75, yeah.
Yeah. So that's, that's the thing. That's, that's the uh, that's the lowdown. If anybody has any questions, happy to address them.
Well, I, I would just note for fuller disclosure that uh our Scott Levy has been nominated to be the Vice President of the WPSBA. And uh we couldn't be happier and we congratulate Scott on his nomination. And we believe that nomination is in fact tantamount to election. Uh, and we congratulate you, Scott. Uh, they're well served by having you.
I appreciate it. And it's been, you know, it's been good this year. I mean, I think that this year, all the groups, I think the superintendents group, groups of principals and board members have found real value in sharing experiences and challenges and learning from each other. So.
Okay. May I, uh, may I have a motion, please, to um authorize the board president to sign the SBA annual meeting ballot, which calls for ratification of the budget and for the slate of officers and members of the Board of Directors? So moved. Second?
Second.
Any further discussion on that? All in favor, please? Aye. And then we have nomination for New York State SBA Area 10 Director. And it looks like the nomination of Peggy Zugiby. And if I mispronounce her name, I do apologize. Scott, would you like to be here on this, please?
Yeah, sure. So um Peggy Zugiby, close, uh, is is actually a member of the North Rockland um School Board and has been, I want to say, I'm pulling out her resume, since 1993. Um, so she's been at this for a very long time. She um has also been involved regionally in the Lower Hudson Education Coalition, but has also served a leadership role at the New York State School Boards Association, um first starting on the board back in 2009. She is being, well, the, the, so the question at hand is to nominate her for another term because she already has been um a Vice President of the um area, basically representing our area, Area 10. And she needs 10 districts in the area to nominate her to be on the slate. Um, and so I just thought that I would share that with the group and I would recommend that we nominate her. Um, and then um ultimately the uh, you know, she's elected by the, the broader uh NISBA membership.
Okay. It appears that this is something we have done in the past. Uh, so may I have a motion, please, to authorize the board to issue a resolution that the Byron Hill School District School has nominated Peggy Zugiby for Area 10 Director of the NYSSBA for 2021, 2022. So moved. Second. Second. All in favor, please? Aye. All right. So uh, so it is done. So thank you, Scott, for bringing this to us.
No worries.
Thank you. Staff reports, Madam Superintendent.
I'm trying to share my screen. Just a moment. There we go. All right, everyone. So go Bobcats. That's how we're going to start. Uh, this was my hopeful picture the last time that we met. And uh, as we know, our football team won a section one championship, which I will talk about a little bit later in our, in my uh student reports. We have a lot of student highlights for today. First, science research. What a great presentation tonight. And Tim and Gina, kudos to you on being able to say all of those titles. And thank you for doing that. When I first heard that Tim and Gina were going to announce all of the titles, I, I was a little curious. It was so nice to hear um in fruition, right? All of the work that they did. So science research, I also want to commend 18 of our seniors who recently participated in the Tri-County Science Fair and three of the students were honored. Biology first place, Luke Brioti, behavior first place, Raquel Kaner, and engineering second place, Tessa Schwartz. And out of over 200 participants, five were selected to compete at the New York State Science Congress in June. Luke and Raquel earned two of these five spots out of the 200 people who were involved. Congrats. We had athletic signing day. I mean, it really looks like we're just a regular school during a regular year, right? Athletic signing day on April 27th, we had eight students who are going to be playing college next year. Uh, we did have two parents per student who were able to attend and we had so many on the livestream. I think it was something over 80 viewers. So congratulations to Michael Iscanio going to SUNY Plattsburgh for baseball, Zach Binder Columbia for fencing, Liam Bruskowitz SUNY Plattsburgh for baseball, Stephen Franco Boston University, not for football surprisingly, but for track and field. And um Alexa Jindal at Stony Brook for women's soccer, Jen Mooy, that's, we expected to see that, Binghamton, Country Track and Field, um Eli Ratson at Hopkins for football, go Hopkins, Mateo Signin and Clarkson University for basketball. So congratulations to our, our students who are going, who are going to schools and continuing in athletics. That's, that's a pretty.
This Jen, Jen Mooy seems to have had some athletic year for Byron Hills. She's still in athlete. That's fabulous.
Yep. Um, and we have a hundredth career goal, hundredth career goal in lacrosse. Congratulations to Lily Seisler and uh what a great picture with her friends behind her and her gold ball. Congratulations, Lily.
That's great.
We also had, as I said in the beginning, and this is the cover of our focus, what a great picture, section one, class B champions, 2021, Byram Hills football. You did us proud. I was so happy when I was at that game and I happened to um, you know, be down on the field. Typically, I'm up in the stands with the parents. I was down in the field and to see it from that angle and to see our kids involved and how happy they were, it was just phenomenal. So congrats.
It really is. Yeah, I, I believe it's the first section championship in over 30 years. For Byron Hills. Yeah. I think they won a year or two before I moved into the community. It's been a long wait since then.
Very strong team this year.
Yeah, very. It's too bad. It's too bad they didn't have the chance really to go all the way to Syracuse in the States. They really might have made quite a run, but this is pretty good in itself.
Yep. And uh Ira, thank you for joining me that day at the game. You always show a, a lot of attention to our student athletes and I know they appreciate it. All right, Muafah Theta induction. We had 45 students inducted. It was presented virtually and they had over 100 people in attendance for that. So it's so nice. I know that parents and grandparents and even, you know, working parents, and sometimes it's typically hard to get to a lot of these events, but we did have a great turnout for that. Congratulations to 45 students who were inducted. Scholastic Achievement Award. This is what I call the superintendent award. Congrats to Mia Dietrich and Olivia Cantor. Uh, these seniors were selected to attend this year's Carol Fisher, um Carol F. Johnson Scholastic Achievement Dinner, which we are not having. It will be taking place virtually. They'll be honored for our schools for um in this event, which really they're chosen based on their high level of academic achievement. There are some great scholarships that come out of that. Um, essentially, superintendents and sponsors contribute. Um, superintendents contribute their own personal money and sponsors uh contribute money toward this scholarship program as well. So we have had many students in the past who have walked away with some really nice scholarships from that. Um, just to be honored to be asked to attend is enough though. Congrats to Mia and Olivia and we'll see what comes of this for them. And AP and K-12 Virtual Art Show, May 12th. Thank you to the fine arts teachers. Thank you to Pete Pollacks, who put this together. We will have two virtual art shows premiering on the same night. Of course, they are recorded, so you can watch one and then go to the other. Um, the K-12 Art Show and AP Art Show will have work from all four of our schools. This is a huge undertaking. The children at the elementary level um worked with their parents to submit a piece of artwork and to talk about that artwork and what they wanted to submit. Uh, middle and high school through the teachers submitted artwork. And then we have our whole AP Art Show that's going to exist as well. So it should be a great night. It's going to be on our website and uh asking everybody to join us on May 12th. Thank you so much to our. Thank you so much to our fine arts teachers, that was a lot for them to put together, they cared very much about highlighting student work, which is awesome. And to end on a sustainable note, this is fantastic, to raise awareness about how we can reduce the impact we have on the planet. There are Byram Hills, teachers, students, administrators, teacher aides, um, anyone and everyone, and our faculty, staff, and student population, reading from this book, which was sent by Chris Walsh to the elementary school principals to share with their classes. So just a beautiful reading of this book by multitude of people, um, just a nice collaboration, and in the spirit of sharing with elementary students, and also in the, in the spirit of caring a lot about our planet and our environment. So thank you so much to everyone who participated in that, it was awesome. And look at this, look who made it. Uh, board, uh, excellence award awarded to Scott Levy, uh, New York State School Boards Association, and this is for leadership development opportunities that he took part in this school year. Uh, Scott, thank you for doing that. Um, this is something that, uh, you should have received it already, if not, Janine will be sending it to you, and you can tape it to your refrigerator, you should. Uh, we appreciate all of your work that you're doing on behalf of Byram Hills and, and all other school districts on New York City boards.
Congratulations, Scott.
Thank you. Thank you.
And last but not least, a big thank you to Byram Teachers. Uh, this is Teacher Appreciation Week, the message I sent out to the teachers this, this week is, this is your day, this is your week, and this is your year, thank you so much for saving our children. So, you know, just my heartfelt gratitude for all of the work that went into a great year for our students, the best year we could possibly have asked for during COVID. Um, I, I, I am humbled to work amongst you, so thank you so much, and congratulations to our teachers and Teacher Appreciation Week. Thank you so much also to the principals who coordinated events in their buildings, the PTSA and the BHGF for everything you have done this week and this year, to applaud our teachers for everything that they're doing. Um, of course, you know, they, they are supported by our administrators, last Saturday was Principal Appreciation Day. I'm not really sure how it got on a Saturday, but it was, and of course, um, none of this work can happen without our staff. So, um, just a shout out to everyone who participated this year. And Hallmark says, this week, it's a celebration of teachers, so I just really wanted to recognize them, and thank everyone while we're all here. All right, and that, um, as they say, is that.
That's a wonderful report, Jen, we should, a lot to be proud of.
Thank you.
Really, uh, Deputy Superintendent Colton Ecker.
Yes, um, I do want to, I'm being inspired by Jen with her student highlights, I do have a curriculum highlight. Um, and continuing with the theme of science, um, I want to mention, if, if any of you know, um, our high school chemistry teacher, Steve Bornham, is, um, whenever you talk to him, you just know his passion for science, and particularly his passion for teaching kids to teach other kids about science. He started our Teaching Assistant Program in the chemistry classes, and he is starting a club this year called Science Ambassadors. And he has right now about 45 members of the club of students, high school students, who put together experiments and go to, they partner with a second grade classroom, every second grade classroom has a team of Science Ambassadors in fifth grade classrooms. And they conduct experiments with those kids, and he's, did it virtually, he was going to do this last year, it got interrupted with the pandemic, and now he is instituting that virtually, and I want to show a couple small little clips because they are just amazingly adorable. Um, so let me just show you how this, uh, works and how it's presented. Um, I'm gonna show an example from fifth grade. So what the students do is, these ambassadors, they find experiments to do that are age-appropriate for kids. So they post on a website and they send it to the classroom teacher who shows it to the students in the class. So this is an example, I'll show part of, uh, this video of these ambassadors in Mrs. Passman's class. And you'll see what they created.
Hey, this is Passman's class, it's Luke, Sophia, and Tally. And we're so excited to be back for our first ever experiment. Today's experiment is called Magic Milk, and Luke is going to demonstrate for you guys by following the scientific procedure. A procedure is just a series of steps that we use when we do an experiment. To start off, Luke is going to pour some milk into a dish until the bottom of the dish is just barely covered. Okay, we've got our milk.
Next, he's adding two drops of food coloring to the center of the dish. Try not to let the drops mix too much. Now, we want you guys to try, ask your parents for some dish soap, milk, a toothpick, and food coloring, and do the experiment yourself.
We would love to see how you guys do. In your video, tell us what your hypothesis was at the beginning of our video, and show us your scientific skills. When your experiment is over, be sure to let it sit for a few minutes without disturbing it to see what happens, and tell us about what your dish looks like in your video. Why do you think the colors move?
At the end of your video, ask us any questions you have, try to think of at least one. One of the most important parts of science is to always be looking for what you guys don't understand and trying to figure it out. We're so excited to see what you guys come up with, see you next time. Bye.
That's great.
You're on mute, Tim.
Tim, you're muted.
Sorry about that, it must have muted me, so thank you, so that's the ambassadors, they conduct that, um, experiment, they show it in their class, and then they have the students go home, and the students will then, um, do their experiment, let me show you Nicholas.
Hey, Tim, you're gonna want to mute that, the one that you're not presenting, I can mute you, I muted you last time because we were hearing a reverberation.
During two, okay.
So I'll do it for you, go ahead.
Okay, great, thank you. Can you find it here? And then here's Nicholas.
Hi, I'm Nikki, and my hypothesis is that the red and the blue are gonna go to the perimeter. My question is that how, what would happen if I used different milk? And this is what it looks like after five minutes.
Let me unmute, so that is one example of a student, and then what happens after they upload that, the Science Ambassadors go and respond to it, and so they're having a conversation with the students as they help them think about science and go through the scientific process, so I'll play this response quickly.
Hi Nikki, great job with your experiment, it came out really great. Um, you had a great question, so basically what happens is when we do the experiment with the milk that you use, when we add the dish soap to the milk, um, with the fruit drops of food coloring on the surface, what we, what happens is the soap reduces the tension of the milk, and that reacts with the fats in the milk. So the fat particles in the milk move, and they, they expand like what we saw. So when you use milk with less fat particles, it's harder for that to happen, so you won't see as much of a expansion in the milk, because there's not as many fat particles for the soap to interact with. A great question, great job, you did amazing.
So that gives an example, and that's, I, I just have, this was the first one, I have been watching tons of these videos, and they're just the most adorable to watch these kids do.
They really are.
I could watch them all day.
Great, she's great.
That's very cool.
Yeah. I got to see Tim watching them today. We were like, are there kids in there?
I was giggling, I was laughing, the kids do these experiments, sometimes the parents are involved, sometimes or a sibling comes by, becomes a whole helpful project. But the ambassadors are really taking this seriously, and they really love the partnership, and something that's so powerful in Byram Hills is the way we mentor younger students, older students with younger students, and doing it through our Chem TA program, or whether it's the mentor program at the high school, um, or the peer leaders, this is just another way to have mentors academically, and it's turning out to be a really exciting year for the kids, so we'll see how Steve and the students expand this with the students. Um, it's really been terrific that he stepped on the ground here. So I want to thank Steve Bornham, and thanks to the teachers in second grade and fifth grade, and to the families who helped do all these science experiments at home, it's been really terrific. So thank you, that's my report tonight, so thanks to everyone.
Okay, thank you very much.
Careful though.
Kelly?
Nope, not following that.
All right.
Your experiment, your hypothesis, Kelly.
Okay, President's Report, just two things. The first thing I noted was a surprise to me, I don't think I've ever seen this before, and it is athletics-related, but in today's Journal News, they talked about the, uh, top softball teams, and they list them 1, 2, 10, or whatever. Then they have teams on the bubble, and lo and behold, there was Byram Hills in girls' softball on the bubble. That is an amazing accomplishment for Byram Hills, I think this is the first time that's happened in a very, very long time, if ever. So congratulations to the coaches and the team, you still have more of a season to go, but this really is a wonderful accomplishment for a program that has come a long way. So you should be justly, justly proud of yourselves, and uh, this is the, perhaps the last board meeting, um, that in public session, uh, before the vote comes, and before we may have a board member elect, uh, and, which is all well and good, uh, but I, I just want to say to this board that I think the progress we've made and the work we've done during this COVID year has been exemplary. I, I think we should all be proud of the work we've done for the students and, and taxpayers and the administration of this district. I think we've, we not, we've all found our way through very difficult issues, and whether we agreed or disagreed, there was never a moment when we didn't think we were all pulling in the same direction, and, and that is the most important thing. So my personal congratulations to each of you. Um, and that is my President's Report, any committee or board member reports? Anything going, going on? Any topics for future agenda, any RFIs on May 4th? Communications to the Board, I did receive a communication from the Byram, from the Byram Hills, from the North Castle Historical Society, where they are interested in cooperating with us as we celebrate the 50-year anniversary of Byram Hills. Uh, as I mentioned to the society, our superintendent's been involved with many issues this year that, uh, took precedence, but we're sure in time that, uh, Jen will be able to turn her attention back to this, which is, to me, is a very interesting uh, endeavor, and so, uh, I know that the Superintendent and the North Castle Historical Society will be in touch, and they can, uh, work through this. But it was, it was always nice to hear from them, and they are very excited about uh, working on that, uh, 50th anniversary of Byram Hills. Um, any other communications to the Board that have not already been reported? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the Board of Education minutes of April 13th, 2021, and April 20th, 2021?
Some of it.
Second.
Any changes, amendments, what happened? Seeing none, all in favor, please? Okay, uh, for the Board, um, I will be in touch with you to schedule an executive session, uh, to discuss the issues we were able to reach, and, uh, we'll hope we'll do it over the next week or so, that, that's my aim. Okay, with that all said, my motion, please, to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Some of it.
Second, all in favor? Thank you, Byram Hills, for watching, have a pleasant evening and good night.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night.